Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the May 3rd, 2018, 8:00 AM work session. I just want to let everybody know that a recording device will be used during this meeting, and we're going to start out today with the swearing in of Officer Tanner Smith, Corporal Dan --
Oh, yeah, Jeff is here. I'm sorry.
Corporal Dan Oris, and Lieutenant Jeffrey Yan Kavitch.
Good morning. My name is Mark Coase, even with police chief, and I just want to welcome you this morning. I'm very excited because we've got a lot of people here. Earlier this month, or last month, Lieutenant Gene Babetzky announced his retirement with any police agency. When you have a high-level announcement like that, there's a lot of shuffling that goes on below, and it presents a lot of opportunity for officers, and I'm really excited and I'm very proud to announce that this morning we're going to be swearing in our newest police officer, Tanner Smith. We're going to be promoting Corporal Dan Oris, who was our lead detective in the department, and our new second-in-command of the department is Jeff Yan Kavitch, and he'll be promoted to lieutenant. So I'm not going to waste time giving bios and whatnot because the oaths of office we have are kind of lengthy, so I'm going to invite Honorable District Magistrate Jeffrey Valoki forward, and we're going to start with Tanner.
Do you have a Bible? You're going to raise your right hand, you're going to place your left hand on the Bible. You're going to repeat after me. "I,"
"I."
"Tanner Gordon Smith,"
"Tanner Gordon Smith."
"do solemnly swear,"
"do solemnly swear."
"and affirm,"
"and affirm."
"that I will support,"
"that I will support."
"obey,"
"obey."
"and defend,"
"and defend."
"the Constitution of the United States of America,"
"the Constitution of the United States of America."
"the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania,"
"the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"the laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine,"
"the laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine."
"and the law enforcement code of ethics,"
"and the law enforcement code of ethics."
"and that I will faithfully discharge,"
"and that I will faithfully discharge."
"the duties of my office,"
"the duties of my office."
"as police officer,"
"as police officer."
"with fidelity,"
"with fidelity."
"to the best of my ability."
"to the best of my ability."
"I will uphold,"
"I will uphold."
"obey,"
"obey."
"and enforce,"
"and enforce."
"the law,"
"the law."
"without consideration,"
"without consideration."
"to a person's race,"
"to a person's race."
"color,"
"color."
"sex,"
"sex."
"religious creed,"
"religious creed."
"sexual orientation,"
"sexual orientation."
"age,"
"age."
"national origin,"
"national origin."
"ancestry,"
"ancestry."
"handicap,"
"handicap."
"or disability,"
"or disability."
"so help me God."
"so help me God."
Congratulations.
Thanks.
No tape backs are stuck now.
I'd like to call forward Dan Oris.
You're going to take the Bible. You're going to raise your right hand, you're going to place your left hand on the Bible, you're going to repeat after me. "I, Daniel Raymond Oris,"
"I, Daniel Raymond Oris."
"do solemnly swear and affirm,"
"do solemnly swear and affirm."
"that I will support,"
"that I will support."
"obey,"
"obey."
"and defend,"
"and defend."
"the Constitution of the United States of America,"
"the Constitution of the United States of America."
"the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania,"
"the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"the laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine,"
"the laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine."
"and the law enforcement code of ethics,"
"and the law enforcement code of ethics."
"and that I will faithfully discharge,"
"and that I will faithfully discharge."
"the duties of my office,"
"the duties of my office."
"as police corporal,"
"as police corporal."
"with fidelity,"
"with fidelity."
"to the best of my ability."
"to the best of my ability."
"I will uphold,"
"I will uphold."
"obey,"
"obey."
"and enforce,"
"and enforce."
"the law,"
"the law."
"without consideration,"
"without consideration."
"to a person's race,"
"to a person's race."
"color,"
"color."
"sex,"
"sex."
"religious creed,"
"religious creed."
"sexual orientation,"
"sexual orientation."
"age,"
"age."
"national origin,"
"national origin."
"ancestry,"
"ancestry."
"handicap,"
"handicap."
"or disability,"
"or disability."
"so help me God."
"so help me God."
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And finally, I'm going to call Jeff Yan Kavitch for -- at the conclusion of the swearing in, we would invite all the friends and family that came out today to just head over to our police side of the building, which probably won't be many people.
Yeah, we're not going to have anybody for our meeting.
For some light refreshments.
You're going to take the Bible. You're going to raise your right hand, and you got it. "I, Jeffrey Christopher Yan Kavitch,"
"I, Jeffrey Christopher Yan Kavitch."
"do solemnly swear and affirm,"
"do solemnly swear and confirm."
"that I will support,"
"that I will support."
"obey,"
"obey."
"and defend,"
"and defend."
"the Constitution of the United States of America,"
"the Constitution of the United States of America."
"the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania,"
"the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"the laws and ordinances of East Brandywine Township,"
"the laws and ordinances of East Brandywine Township."
"and the law enforcement code of ethics,"
"and the law enforcement code of ethics."
"and that I will faithfully discharge,"
"and that I will faithfully discharge."
"the duties of my office,"
"the duties of my office."
"as police lieutenant,"
"as police lieutenant."
"with fidelity,"
"with fidelity."
"to the best of my ability."
"to the best of my abilities."
"I will uphold,"
"I will uphold."
"obey,"
"obey."
"and enforce,"
"and enforce."
"the law without consideration,"
"the law without consideration."
"to a person's race,"
"to a person's race."
"color,"
"color."
"sex,"
"sex."
"religious creed,"
"religious creed."
"sexual orientation,"
"sexual orientation."
"age,"
"age."
"national origin,"
"national origin."
"ancestry,"
"ancestry."
"handicap,"
"handicap."
"or disability,"
"or disability."
"so help me God."
"so help me God."
Congratulations.
That concludes the swearing in, so if the guests would like to have the back doors, multiple pictures of the town.
Okay, moving on, we're going to go to public comment for non-agenda items, but before we do that, I just want to remind everybody of Resolution 0108, Rules for Conduct of Public Meetings, and I'll read that to you, just so we're setting the baseline here. The times located to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer under 4C. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. I do know, first, I'm going to allow Ms. Ulller, so she can get on her way, time to go over the pollution reduction plan.
Okay.
You're fine.
Fine here?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. This is part of our public participation requirements for the pollutant reduction plan. To give a little bit of background, the pollutant reduction plan is part of the township's NPDS municipal separate storm sewer system permit requirements. This regulates all the storm water that runs off onto township-owned infrastructure, specifically roadways, and into storm sewer systems and out into the waters of the Commonwealth or surface waters. So we submitted an application on behalf of the township for the new permit back in September, and a part of the application requirements for the pollutant reduction plan. The pollutant reduction plan requires the township to establish baseline sediment pollutant loading and develop a plan to reduce that pollutant loading by 10% over a five-year period by implementing stormwater projects or stormwater best management practices. The original plan included the Hawthorne Drive infiltration trenches, that's in conceptual phase right now, and the Culbertson Run development, as well as basin retrofit in the community park and a proposed bio-swell. DEP has issued a comment letter on that back in February, and we've been working in close coordination with the township and DEP to address their comments, a lot of which were kind of unforeseen, and resulted in a pretty substantial increase in the baseline pollutant loading for the township. So as a result, we had to look at revising the proposed projects, and because we revised the proposed projects, that kicked us into public participation requirements again, which is why we're here. A quick review of the proposed projects is the township park BMPs have been removed, and the stream restoration project along Culbertson Run within the Hideaway Farms community has been added in order to meet the minimum pollutant reduction requirements. The length has been proposed as 325 feet. That may or may not be feasible as the project progresses into subsequent design stages. However, DEP has acknowledged that any additional credit that's been incurred within the five-year period can be credited to future permit cycles, which is a good thing. So at this point here, the public notice has been published on April 12th. The plan is available for review on the township website. There will be form there to provide comment and submit electronically. The plan's also available for review at the township building. Comments will be accepted, written comments will be accepted for 30 days, and a part of the requirement is also that the township accept verbal and written comments at a public meeting for which this will fulfill. Any questions?
Has there been any public comments so far?
We, Matthew Van Lou, reached out to the community manager at Hideaway Farms, and they presented the information to their board, and they just requested that the township consider removing the hatchery as part of the stream restoration project if it moves forward. So that's something that we need to look into and get more information on, because I'm not sure the information regarding location and that type of thing of the hatchery they're referring to.
I thought there was a, didn't we have this come up just a couple of months ago that there was actually, the trout club wanted to re-establish that hatchery and supposedly had an agreement with the HOA to do that? So I'm just bringing that up to you because you raised it. Do we anticipate that this 10%, when we get done with the five-year cycle, that we're going to have another 10% for the next five years and that this is going to go on?
That's what DEP is saying until the streams become delisted from the impaired list, so they have to go through, even if water quality improves instantly after you implement the projects, which, you know, I don't know what the likelihood of that is, DEP still has to get out and do their assessment of the streams and, you know, update their report of the impaired waters listings. So that's basically what they're saying, is that there'll be another 10%, there'll be another 10%. There may be additional requirements on top of that for other streams. This is just relating to Culbertson Run and unnamed tributaries to Beaver Creek right now.
Which are the only ones that are listed?
Only ones that are listed as impaired for sediment in East Brandywine. Yeah.
I don't think any other questions.
Is this the public, this is the public comment requirement meeting?
Yes.
Scott, it's not on the agenda. How is it going to be public knowledge if it's not on the agenda?
I think what she said was it was advertised.
April 12th.
Yeah.
And it was advertised for May 3rd, but wasn't this agenda online on our website?
Yeah, well, the agenda goes out on Friday, but I think the legal requirement is that it be advertised, and then we allow.
Yeah, well, as far as DEP is concerned, I mean, that would be a township preference, I guess, but as far as DEP is concerned, the requirements are that you publish a public notice establishing a 30-day comment period, minimum of 30-day comment period, and then you offer public comment at a meeting. It honestly doesn't even say that you have to refer to that public meeting date in your advertisement, but, you know, we do anyway, just because it makes sense to, otherwise how would anybody know? And then you have to, you know, respond to each or consider each comment that's received and documented and sent to DEP. So, you know, in terms of that's, you know, in terms of whether it was on the agenda or not, that's.
I'm referring to more of our policies, you know, here.
So you said 30 days written from the, is that what you said?
A minimum of 30-day comment period from the public notice publication date.
From the date it was filed, which was the 12th.
Yeah.
All right, so as we said, we're on a public meeting now. People who are watching this at home will have the option to write to you or us regarding this issue. The second thing is you put it in the paper, and you said for them to correspond with you or us.
The township, yes.
The township. Okay, so we've covered at least two, I just want as many people as possible, and then Luke, maybe a third, put it on the township that they have, website that they have 30 days as of the 12th, so that we've covered even a third base, just to be careful.
Beth, you do this for a lot of municipalities, do you not?
Yes.
Do you ever see public comment?
I may get one every, one for every, like, three or four municipalities.
Yeah, just to put it in perspective, that it's something that the DEP regulations require, but it's, and I'm not suggesting that people shouldn't comment, but it's not, it's one of those things, it's like check the box type of thing, and you don't typically get a lot of public comment, so we are following the law.
Still be nice.
Okay, so you're good. Thank you very much. Again, moving on, public comment, any other public comment for non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. We're going to hit the previous minutes of, I'm sorry, we're going to hit the minutes of the previous meetings for the Board of Supervisors, April 19th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion that they be approved as submitted.
And I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion for the Planning Commission, April 4th, 2018.
I move that they be approved as submitted.
And I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we're going to go on to pension committee items. The first one, appoint township manager Scott Pierceall as the East Brandywine Township Pension Plan CFO.
So moved.
All right, what, I'm not 100% certain what this is, bear with me. Appoint the officer. Is this a new, is this a new thing?
No.
Or is this a reappointment?
It's a reappointment. It was missed at the reorganization meeting. I'm the person responsible on behalf of the township for completing any forms for the police and non-uniform pension plans.
All right, sorry, I didn't have a chance to read over the three of them, so that's why I was holding up there. All right, so appoint township manager Scott Pierceall as East Brandywine Township Pension Plan CFO. There was a motion on the table.
I don't think there was a second. I made the motion, but I don't think there was a second motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have any problems?
Yeah, I'm going to say I don't agree. I don't know. I'd have to look into it more.
Does it have to be done today?
That's up to the board.
All right, well, if you have questions, you'd be good to get them by next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
All right, appointment of Officer John Hayes to the un-uniform, I'm sorry, Uniform Pension Committee.
So moved.
And I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have any questions on that one?
No.
And then police pension service increment benefit. Do I have a motion?
Let me see where we.
This is an ordinance. Do I make a change to the pension plan?
Yes.
This, I looked at it this morning, it looks like there are collective bargaining agreement called for the police pension plan to receive a service increment benefit, and anytime you're changing the police pension plan, you have to do it through the ordinance process. So the ordinance is very simple, it just adopts and attaches Amendment Number Four, which is on the back of the ordinance, which adds to Section 3.2, a new sub-paragraph D that says that any eligible participant, so that would be police officers who are eligible for the police pension, that they'll receive a service increment benefit of $100 per month for each completed year of benefits service in excess of 25. Total service increment benefit shall not exceed $500 per month after the participant has completed five years of benefits service in excess of the 25 years.
Do we have to go through a hearing on an ordinance?
I'm assuming this was advertised?
No, it was not. It just came to our attention through the.
Yeah, we need to.
So we're going to table that one as well until the next, the next.
No, all we're asking is permission to advertise that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
So moved.
And I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll advertise it for your next meeting, it's only a seven-day notice.
Yeah, and he had questions on the other thing, so that's fine, we have the one of the three done. Okay, old business, I don't think we have any old business. New business, a motion for the contract approval for Lieutenant Yan Kavitch.
So moved.
And I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no ordinance task force subdivision and zoning application, Plainbrook Partners, 321 Zin Road, and this is regarding the final subdivision and land development plan submittal.
I have a question on this one, because the, there was a waiver letter, Vic, that indicated two waivers, but then in the Planning Commission's minutes, it reflects only one waiver. So did the waiver for the stormwater matter, did that go away?
Yes, that was just more of an interpretation issue.
Okay, so with the final plan, you're also requesting the waiver from the Section 350-46A for monuments?
Correct.
And that's the only waiver needed?
That's the only waiver needed.
Okay. So the Planning Commission minutes reflected that the Planning Commission did give a recommendation for approval, subject to getting a clean review letter from Penone, executing all the necessary legal agreements, which would be the stormwater management agreement, the developer agreement, financial security agreement, paying the fee in lieu of open space, and I guess that was it?
Traffic impact fee.
On traffic impact fee. That's not noted in the minutes.
They apparently missed that.
Yeah. But that would be something that should be included in your motion.
All right, so I have a relationship with Plainbrook Partners, so I'm going to recuse myself from this, and I'll let you, Jay and Jason, go ahead and run this portion.
And I've been advised, I am the attorney for the estate of Emmanuel Ginden, and I've been advised by the solicitor that I need to note that on the record, but that does not require me to recuse myself from consideration of this application. It seems like there are a couple of outstanding issues from the Penone, March 28, 2018, letter. I'm assuming that you have no problem with complying with any of those?
We have no problem complying with those. In fact, some of the outstanding issues, we've already gotten into their hands and we've resolved. So if it's subject to this letter, we have no issues with that whatsoever.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Do you have any questions?
sewage facilities planning module, I think there was something outstanding with that, there was a letter.
Pardon me?
The sewage facilities planning module, there's a letter in that packet, I think there was something outstanding with that.
Did you get their planning module approval?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's okay.
We would expect that to be a condition of approval as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, with that said, I'd make a motion that we approve the final subdivision and land development application of Plainbrook Partners LLC for 321 Zin Road, subject to their compliance with all the outstanding issues and raised in the March 28, 2018 Penone letter, obtaining the final sewage facilities planning approval, and the payment of all township fees, as well as, and I include in that, I think there's some, there's an outstanding invoice for reviews that needs to be addressed.
There we go.
Still subject to it because the check didn't clear.
Thanks, Scott.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
And again, I recuse myself.
Okay, moving on to Mapleview, impact open space fees.
So this is a subdivision that the board granted conditional final plan approval, and one of the conditions dealt with the payment of the fee in lieu of open space, and the fee identified in the motion of approval, I think, was $308,000. The applicant's counsel, after the board approved the plans with conditions, reached out to the township and proposed that they felt that they had provided enough by way of certain amenities at the subdivision, certain landscaping features, certain trail features, that they felt the cost of those offset the fee, and we took a look at that, and again, not having been involved in the review of it, I really, I go back to the ordinance, and I look specifically at what the subdivision ordinance says is appropriate as far as credits against open space fees. I also met with Nate Klein, had conversations with Scott, and I do think that some of what they're providing is entitled to a credit, I don't think that all of it is. And I had put forth a letter back to their counsel, Greg Adelman, that the first part of the letter confirms the discussion with respect to the traffic impact fee, we have no issue with the way they've, you know, handled that. It's really the discussion on the open space fee. I think that based on what they're providing and the cost estimates that have been reviewed by Nate Klein, that the developer would be entitled to a credit of $174,429, so that would be deducted from the $308,000. One of, I think one of the sticking points is some of the things they're providing, the ordinance would require them to provide. So our subdivision land development or zoning code would require that. It's not that because you've complied with our ordinance, you therefore get a credit. If it wasn't part of the ordinance, then yes, I would agree they'd get a credit for that. I think one of the other sticking points is that they indicated that when they first put the plan forward, there was a parcel right along Horseshoe Pike that they believed they could have put four townhomes on, and at the request of the Planning Commission, they kept that parcel vacant, and they're using that, you know, not using that for homes, and they felt that they should be given some sort of credit for those four homes that they're lost. The problem with that is there's really no way to calculate what the value of that is. So what Nate tried to do was look at, you know, if you took the $308,000 as the fee that's owed, and that's calculated based on what the resolution is per lot, he took those four lots and gave, you know, divided the 308 by the number of lots in development. So again, I think that what we're doing is sort of, it's a compromise, and I think it's a compromise that's based on the ordinance requirements. So I just wanted to make sure the board was comfortable with that. Again, not having been involved in the review, I didn't, you know, it's sort of at your discretion, but I think this is a reasonable way to do it that's consistent with how the ordinance is set forth.
What's the $20,000 fee for the acquisition?
That was something, you mean the top part, that's dealing with the traffic fee. So Pendot, as part of the Applecross development, there's improvements that are supposed to occur at the intersection of Horseshoe Pike and Bonneville Road, and that's on Pulte, that's Pulte obligation to do those road improvements. Pendot would like to see those road improvements be done, there's some easements that need to be acquired for that to happen, and so what Pendot is trying to do, as other developers are coming in with projects along Horseshoe Pike, they're asking that the township, recognizing the township's going to be collecting a traffic impact fee from developers such as the Mapleview Development, they're asking that the township agree that of that, of the money that they're going to be paying for the traffic impact fee, that the township agree that $20,000 of that be set aside and utilized for the acquisition of the necessary rights of way that the township agree that $20,000 of that be set aside and utilized for the acquisition of the necessary rights of way to be able to do the improvement at Bonneville and Horseshoe Pike. Quite honestly, I think it's not, it's not really PennDOT's position to do that, but we, I think everybody wants to see that road improvement be done, so, you know, we said, fine, we'll do that. There's really no tracking in terms of PennDOT coming back and saying, well, where did you put, I mean, you have your traffic impact fee funds, and you can use that for any of the traffic intersection improvements that are identified in your study that, you know, was adopted prior to adopting the traffic impact fee. So, it was basically just sending a letter back to PennDOT saying, yes, of the $207,000 that they're gonna be collecting from this developer, we'll agree that $20,000 can be allocated and set aside to be utilized for that intersection improvement.
Do you think, though, that if that is gonna be a requirement, then we have to look at the number as far as, is $20,000 adequate enough?
Well, they, this developer's not required to do anything for that, that is a Pulte development requirement. They are already on the hook based on the settlement agreement for the Applecross, and they fully are committed to doing that. There's not, they don't, they're not trying to balk at it, it's not a matter of the cost, they're willing to do that. What they need, though, is an entity to acquire the necessary right-of-way from various property owners along Horseshoe Pike. So the agenda item is really just to make sure you're comfortable with the approach that we're taking and giving me authority to send this letter back to applicant's counsel.
The, so this is a draft letter?
This is a draft, that's right. And I did speak with Greg Adelman yesterday, I had explained to him the analysis that myself and Nate Klein went through, and he said he would pass it on to the client and.
Should we go by motion?
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion that we give Mapleview a credit of $174,429 toward the open space fee for the improvements that they're doing, reducing the total fee in lieu of open space, making the total fee in open space $133,571, and authorize Kristin Camp to send the draft letter that we've been presented dated April 27, 2018.
And I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ordinance and resolutions for consideration, correction to Resolution Number 12 of 2018 dated April 19, 2018, to instead reflect Resolution Number 13 of 2018 dated April 19, 2018. Do I have a second?
So, I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public comment on agenda items for today. Seeing none, some notices here, the uniform and non-uniform pension committees will meet directly following this meeting, and the Board of Supervisors will meet in executive session following the pension committee meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Do I have an adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.